And what?
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
That's a member of Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Here.
Councilmember Galambe.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Council President Bridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
And councilmember Wyatt is in the chambers.
Cormus present.
All right, um, stand for the pledge. Our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. L Warner.
The scripture that I want to share today actually comes from the book of Job. Those of you who are a bit familiar with the biblical narrative know that the book of Job is the epic story of suffering. And, uh, life seems to live a little Job-esque today, it seems for so many of us in leadership. The verses from Job, chapter fourteen, read, "Even a tree has more hope. If it's cut down, it will sprout again and grow new branches. Though its roots have grown old in the earth and its stump decays at the scent of water, it will bud and sprout again like a new seedling." Here in the story of suffering are these verses of remarkable hope. That even when everything looks dead, that at the scent of water, new buds sprouting seedlings can come. We are pretty familiar with the scent of water here with Niagara Falls in the backyard, Lake Erie and the shoreline that so many of us enjoy. And the scent of water itself brings life, brings moisture and helps seeds to grow. The scent of water around what we're experiencing now, perhaps some of us feel is a vaccine on the horizon. And as that scent of water comes, it feels like new life could come. But right now, for every leader in this region, for those of you in government, but for every business leader, education leader, religion leader, every family, everybody that's trying to lead, they're desperate for some scent of water that begins to bring hope into a time of great suffering. So I want to pray in an unusual way because we're coming into Buffalo's winter and that's not usually the time that we think of new buds. But I want to pray in an unusual season, that scripture, "At the scent of water, it will bud and sprout again like a new seedling," that hope is going to be, and you as leaders will be able to help steward the seedling as it comes. Let's pray. Father, uh, you know that even when the name Job is mentioned most, think immediately about the suffering that he endured. Uh, but Lord, I thank you that in the midst of that suffering, there are these words that remind us that even things that appear to be dead, even things that have drawn, uh, all the life out of them, that there can still be new life, new future, new hope. Lord, I, I pray for every, uh, child. I pray for every, uh, adult. I pray for every, uh, person who's part of our precious city today. Lord, I pray for kids who, who, uh, education has been changed so dramatically. I pray, Lord, that today there'd be the scent of water and that you bring, uh, hope and Lord, uh, opportunities, avenues for learning. I pray for the leaders today of Buffalo City Government, our common council, that as, uh, they're deliberating that, Lord, the scent of water will fill their nostrils and that they'll be able to have hope, even as there have been so many things that are different than any of us could have expected or planned. For those in business, uh, for those in education, for those, uh, that even now are navigating new waters. Lord, I ask that there'd be, uh, the, the scent of water in our nostrils. Lord, speak to us and speak direction. And Lord, let there be new buds coming even during Buffalo's winter, I ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers' memorials. Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and again, I'm going to apologize for the, for the echo. But we have had a series of losses over these last several days, uh, one of which we lost, uh, Ms. Dolores from the Maston District, who has been nothing but a blessing to, uh, my, uh, tenure as a council member and to the previous, uh, few, uh, council members, uh, by the name of Demone Smith, Antoine Thompson and Byron Brown. She has been a blessing to the Maston District. The Cambridge Block Club will sorely miss her. The Maston District, um, office will sorely miss her, uh, her tenacity, her fortitude. She had stage four lung cancer and she passed away, uh, last week and we just want the city of Buffalo to know how special Ms. D was, Ms. Dolores, how special she was to all of us. I also want to lift up, uh, the family of, uh, Anson Griggs. Um, his father baptized me at New Zion Baptist Church. Anson Griggs was a family friend. He was his brother, uh, Adrian, uh, has been communicating with my family, um, so that, uh, we could, uh, you know, pray with them, mourn with them. And, uh, my brother, uh, my oldest brother, Steve, uh, they were very, very, very special friends and he's actually coming from California, driving to be with his friend Adrian, uh, his childhood friend Adrian, um, to mourn with him, to be there with him, to be a shoulder that he can lean on as well. Um, we also would like to lift up the family of, uh, Al Thompson, uh, affectionately called Uncle Al from the people who are around me. Uncle Al, uh, lost his wife, his heartbeat, his breath. He lost the Dr. Carmella Thompson. She was a beautiful woman. When I would go by the house, she would be a force though, to be reckoned with. Uh, I, I, Al, Al is a very, very strong man. And it takes a very, very, very strong man to, to exist with a very, very, very strong woman of which Dr. Thompson was. And I'm asking that the city of Buffalo continue to lift up Al in their prayers as well as the family of Dr. Carmella. Uh, because I know that all the work that she's done over the years, she will certainly, certainly be sorely missed. So we've experienced some grave, uh, losses in the city of Buffalo. And I'm praying that everyone continues to lift each other up in prayer. Just keep people in your thoughts as we move forward, even through this pandemic that has claimed the lives of many over this last eight, nine months. So let's continue to just be a city of good neighbors, be the country that everyone can look to, to be that beacon of light and hope. And I pray that this council will continue to, uh, reserve this time so that we can make sure that folks know that we care and love them. Thank you for this time, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lovejoy District, we lost Phil Wechek. Uh, Mr. Wechek was, uh, one of the owners of Wechek's restaurant on Clinton Street over in the Kaiser Town neighborhood. Um, very well known for their fish fry and all around good food. I spent a lot of time, uh, there when I was growing up. And, uh, it's a, it's a restaurant that everybody's very proud of the business they built in the neighborhood. Um, Mr. Wechek was a veteran. I believe he served in Vietnam. Um, so just a great guy overall and, uh, he will be sorely missed. We send our condolences to the family. Thank you.
Councilmember Galambe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Black Rock lost, uh, Mr. Tataro, um, one of our, uh, most active members. Uh, he was active with the, uh, uh, Black Rock Association with the, uh, D District Monthly Meetings. Uh, I know, I've known him forever, a great guy. Um, he's going to be very, very sorely missed by his family, his friends, and, uh, he had the epitaph of not only the mayor of Dearborn, but the mayor of Black Rock, you know, just, just a great guy. I miss him already.
Any others, councilmembers? Um, we also, uh, talk about, uh, Dr. Carmella, uh, who was funeralized from True Bethel on Monday. Um, and, uh, who I had the pleasure of dedicating her first grandchild in their home. Um, and, uh, was a member of the True Bethel, uh, church, faithful member of the True Bethel Church. She had her faithful, um, her, her regular seat and, uh, she faithfully attended. Um, Nettie Anderson, who is one of the, uh, persons who inspired, uh, the grassroots organization to come together. Um, she has gone on and she will be also funeralized from, uh, the True Bethel Church on Saturday, uh, with an eleven AM walk, walk-through wake and a private ceremony at noon. Um, another giant, uh, who influenced a lot of people and a lot of people who are in office today. Um, she, it was because of her, people like her, uh, people like Mr. Dolores. I lived right on Cambridge. Um, and it was people like Mr. Dolores and they had someone on Cambridge by name, they called him the mayor, Alonso. Um, and those two were always a force to be reckoned with. Um, and finally, Nanette Jacobs, who actually has moved to Florida, but they are bringing her body back to be funeralized from True Bethel. And the only reason I bring it up is because although they moved to Florida, they were still lovers of Buffalo and support everything from the common council, watching the common council, uh, watching church on Sunday and their heart is in Buffalo. And she desired to be buried here. So for all of those and for those who have given their lives for our country, for the freedom of our country and others since our last meeting and during this pandemic, we of course, we of course remember, uh, the many people who, um, passed on due to COVID and the frontline workers that we are now seeing, um, who are, some of them are passing on due to COVID. And so we want to remember all of those names, uh, that have been called today as we pause in these chambers and around for a moment of silence. Thank you. On a motion by Mr. Revere, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of stated meeting held on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty are before you. I mean, are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files that you have? Hearing no objections, we will hear the entire agenda starting from the top.
Item number one, HUD Lead Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah.
Council President Bridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number two, submission of monthly report, November twenty-twenty.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Galambe.
Item number three, Restore Three Curtis Building.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah.
Council President Bridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number four, Washington Apartment Pilot.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number five, fiscal year twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty Auditor Communications Letter.
Motion sent by just five, six and seven to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number eight, encroachment on City Right-Away, two-two-five Louisiana.
Working two items eight through eleven.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah.
Council President Bridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number twelve, Letter to the Controller.
Motion to send to many items twelve and thirteen.
Second by Councilmember Fairlott.
Item number fourteen, Western New York Polygraph Services.
Motion to finance.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number fifteen, item recalled from Mayor twenty dash fourteen twenty-six.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Galambe.
Item number sixteen, Special Use Permit, twelve sixty-four hurdle.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number seventeen, items returned to City Clerk by Mayor without approval or disapproval.
Motion to receive and file, items seventeen and eighteen.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number nineteen, Notices of Appointment.
Motion to send to Civil Service, items, uh, nineteen and twenty.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number twenty-one, Monthly City Hall Incident Report.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Fairlott.
Item number twenty-two, University District Main Street.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number twenty-three, Committee Meetings Transcriptions.
Motion to receive the files, item three, three and three.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number twenty-five, Property Damage from Late Surges.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number twenty-six, Public Comments Regarding Agenda Item Twenty Dash Fifteen Twenty-One.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number twenty-seven, Bailey Avenue Traffic Calming.
Motion to see items twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Council President.
Yes, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to address item number twenty-eight.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we are now nine months into this pandemic. That is nine months during which this children of the Buffalo Public Schools have been taking part in remote learning. Nine months without their teaching, teachers having a close eye on them. Nine months since they have been surrounded by their friends and classmates. Nine months during which I promise you many, many of these students have fallen behind. This has also provided the Buffalo Public Schools nine months to produce a plan, nine months to produce a plan, which would return these students, their teachers and the administrators of those buildings to their schools in a safe manner. The fact that there does not appear to be any semblance of a plan to do so is a failure of magnificent proportion, which could irreparably harm these kids for the rest of their lives. And if it isn't figured out soon, we'll do so. I have spoken to teachers, parents, students, administrators about these past nine months. Best case scenario, these kids are treading water scholastically while being harmed mentally and socially due to withdrawal from the outside world. I do not have to explain to any of you the worst case scenarios. Poverty, neglect, abuse, all exacerbated by the pandemic. Your children going to bed hungry because they're not receiving meals at school. You have students whose teachers may not spot signs of neglect or abuse they otherwise might have. You have students falling behind because they can't keep up or quite frankly, aren't, no one's helping them log on to their online classrooms. And students socially entering a free fall. Simply put, virtual learning is not working. Again, the Buffalo Public Schools has had nine months to come up with a plan to return these students. Some of our most valuable, some of our small, our most vulnerable and some of our most vital resources back into those schools in order to help them flourish. Buffalo is one of the poorest cities in the country. I would like someone to explain to me how they intend, we attempt to give these children the tools to break that cycle of poverty if we aren't fully educating them socially or sch- scholastically. It is absolutely infuriating to me to sit and watch suburban school districts figure a way to return their kids to school while the Buffalo Public Schools, a district overwhelmingly full of black and brown kids who are historically marginalized, sit idle, not informing parents or teachers of a return policy. An administration who seems to be kicking this issue down the road, no one else is going to fix this. This is what all the administrators walking around City Hall are supposed to be doing. And don't get me wrong, we have to have everyone on the same page in order to accomplish this. And the teachers I have spoken to are, are concerned for their well-being in addition to the well-being of the students, and I don't blame them. I've had teachers reference visiting their classrooms late in the late summer in anticipation of hopefully going back in September, only to find that their classrooms have not been touched since last spring. The same stains, the same dirt, same every, all, all the uncleanliness throughout their classrooms, simply untouched. I've heard from teachers and administrators who've been told they have to develop their own return policy. Please explain to me how you are going to return to school, a district of thirty thousand students, whether it's split in half, however you plan on doing it, you're going to have them do it on individual basis in the schools. That is insane to me. This is a billion dollar corporation and God knows how much money is spent on the administrators in this organization. And something on, no one can put a plan together to return these kids back to school. This is an absolute failure. And the ones being harmed are the children of the city of Buffalo and I will not sit back for one more second while this failure continues. I'm anticipating either, uh, the superintendent or Dr. Crestis to attend our community development committee next weekend. And I have a lot of questions I want answered. I want these kids back in school where they can be educated and taken care of. Um, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. It'll be discussed in community development next Tuesday. Anyone else? All right. Next item.
Item number twenty-nine, Special Use Permit, seven-five-two Elmwood.
Motion sent to legislation, we can plan award items twenty-nine through thirty-two.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Submissions list. Under Civil Service, item number one, appoint street worker.
Uh, Civil Service, item numbers one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Motion is to approve. Uh, are we including item fourteen as well? I see no reason not to approve item fourteen as well. And if we could approve this unanimous consent without objection, that is the motion.
We have to have a roll call vote. Roll call.
We don't need a roll.
Councilmember Bowman.
You have a roll call vote. That's the ruling. That's what we've done for all of them. We can't change for one area. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah.
Council President Bridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
No.
Here it is.
Uh, under Finance, item fifteen, CDBGCV Funding Allocation.
Motion to approve item number fifteen.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah.
Council President Bridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, Department of Auto Control, pure-to-pure review.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number seventeen, Approval to Add Three Vehicles to Fleet.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Galambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah.
Council President Bridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Under Legislation, item number eighteen, Food Store License, nine oh four Broadway.
Motion is to deny number eighteen and nineteen.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski, um, who I believe has the floor. I can't see his square, but there we go. Councilmember.
I have denied both these applications because they do not meet the qualification standards dated in the Unified Development Ordinance, section eleven point three, point three, section eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the record.
Do we need a roll call vote for the denials?
Um, I don't believe we do Corporation Council. Do we need a roll call vote on the denial?
We usually don't.
Okay. Next item.
Resolutions, item thirty-three, Erie Basin Marina Resolution.
Motion, these are late files. I defer to, uh, the Spencer.
You're a majority leader for item number thirty-three. Can you please market adapt?
Motion to adapt.
Is ours an approval or a doubt? Thirty-five remain. Next item.
Item number thirty-four, uh, inquiry into school speed zone camera program.
Uh, this is the late file deferred to, uh, Council President.
Thank you, sir. I think our, our numbers, um, okay, on our, so I was a little confused because we got thirty-three and thirty-three on ours. But I think on the publics, it does, it is correct. Um, so this is an inquiry, uh, that myself and several colleagues, um, are asking for. We know that there have been a lot of errors in this program. Uh, we know that the mayor on yesterday, uh, rightfully said that those who received the tickets after of the fourteen days, um, and paid them would be refunded. However, there is a question in this resolution that asks our Corporation Council, uh, to opine on the validity of the tickets that occurred since our, um, the agenda item, as it says, twenty-fourteen forty-four, which changed the ordinance, uh, in as far as the hours, number one, and changed also where the signage had to be, uh, moved with beacons. Um, we've heard many, many, many complaints of people not being able, uh, not knowing, especially if they weren't familiar with the area, that they were entering the speed zone until it was too late. This resolution also requests, um, uh, the administration, um, inquiries about the citations allegedly, because I don't, I don't have all of the proof, but I do have some outside of the stated days and hours. Because some people did, and I, I saw, and, and many people have sent their tickets to, uh, my office in which it was outside of either the day that it should have been, because either school was not in or outside of the hours from the legislation. Um, my personal feeling, and I'll express that on the next resolution, is that if they've paid them, they shouldn't even have to contact us, that they, they should be reimbursed. But we want to know the number, uh, because I want to be clear, there were some on this council that are ready, uh, to put a halt or a pause, uh, to this program. I think that the numbers are very, very important to look at. I know the company, uh, sent us a letter that I'll talk about in two seconds. But this also directs that copies be sent to the administration. Now, we did receive this kind of, I'm going to say of, I thought it was an unfortunate letter from the company in that I got it that these letters went out according to them, um, that they went out late, um, because of, or the service, because of a severe ice storm. I think what I take issue with is their last statement. Instead of just taking ownership, because this isn't about, uh, these people getting their tickets late. It isn't about the ten percent. The, the last sentence says at twenty-five miles per hour over the speed limit, there is only a ten percent chance of a child surviving, being hit by the speeding vehicle. This was about the failure of the tickets to get to people within the fourteen days. I want to be clear. And th- this is what, what this council is discussing. We have discussed the safety element. And, um, this body voted, uh, to, to go forward and then this body voted to change the times. Um, and so if I can ask Corporation Council, since the twenty-fourteen forty-four, um, agenda item on November seventeenth, the tickets that are being given now, if the beacons and signage had not been moved, the tickets that are being given now, if the beacons and signage had not been moved, are those valid tickets?
Assistant Corporation Council Karen Gordon. Council President Pridgen, at this moment, I think I would myself need to look at the language of the amendment closer. I do know, I have a relatively good understanding of what the amendment was supposed to be. I would also need to verify that the beacons and everything that you're just speaking of was not, was not installed and everything as it was supposed to be done were not done. And so at this moment, since I don't have those information at my fingertips, I would like to review it and then get back to you at a later date if that's okay with this council.
Well, we'll send it to committee. I, I would like for this to be approved today and sending the remainder to committee so that we do have an item and that by Tuesday we have it. Because here, here is my concern. We, we did an amendment, those beacons, everything, I think we would be in much better shape when it comes to public trust is after we've voted that those beacons were moved. Because this was working with community, this was working with people, and if we are still issuing tickets and the beacons have not been immediately moved. I mean, I, I don't think it takes a lot to move them, but they got to be moved. And if they aren't moved, I don't know how we continue then to ticket people in those areas. So we could have an answer on that for Tuesday's committee meeting. If this passes, then I would appreciate that. Any other Councilmember Galambe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with you in many regards about the problems with these tickets. That's, this has probably been the number one issue that my office has received emails and phone messages about. Same thing as you mentioned, people sending copies of their tickets and so on and so forth. And I'll be honest, I'm a little bit confused as to what tickets are supposed to be valid and which ones are not. What I've been doing is encouraging everybody to simply, you know, plead not guilty and ask for a date for a hearing, and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to assist them in that regards. So I would like to know, you know, more about this. My, I, I will vote for the resolution. I would prefer, you know, just simply going to committee until we get answers for it. I think that one of the problems was that this has been a cluster since the very beginning. I think that part of the problem is is because of COVID hitting and things like that. But I think that there's just a lot of confusion out there among people as to, you know, you know, what schools are open, what schools are not, you know. I drive down Military Road almost every single day, and whether it's earlier in the morning, in the middle of the afternoon, or late at night, I have people that are going, you know, twelve, fifteen miles an hour at all times, because I think there's just this confusion that is out there. And I think that that's going to be the number one issue that we as a city are going to have to do is to explain to people, you know, when these cameras are on, when they're not on. And, you know, once again, it's just, it's just utterly confusing to most people. So I look forward to getting answers for these questions as well. I know that there was also some talk at one time about being some sort of a partial amnesty. That if somebody got, for the sake of argument, five tickets for going in front of the same school at twenty-six or thirty-one miles an hour, you know, not an overly excessive speed, you know, but received them as a bunch later. I know there was talk about, you know, possibility of waiving the later tickets. And then from that point on, everybody that gets a ticket simply has to pay for it, period, end of discussion. I'd like to see if that is something that is possible. The problem, of course, is, is that I don't know the actual legal language. I, you know, have to rely on Ms. Gordon and her expertise when it comes to the legalese that's in the contract. But I would hope that we would be able to err at this point on the side of the people that have received tickets and hopefully maybe come up with some sort of an amnesty, if it's legal, if it's legal. I don't know if it's even legal. But if there is a way to do that, and then from this point on, you know, there's, you know, you're, you're you get a ticket in a school zone, you know, you're going to have to pay for it. But I commend you on the resolution and hopefully we'll be able to find something that will help some of the residents in our district. And in particular, you know, I don't want to help the residents that were going forty, you know, on a fifteen. I think that if they were going thirty or twenty-six or whatever, you know, during the day, you know, that's one thing. But, you know, it's just been a cluster since day one, and I want to try to address it as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your support. Anyone else? Councilmember Wingo, and then Councilmember Farrelletto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to share my sentiments because I absolutely agree with the, the spirit behind this resolution. We do need some clarity on what exactly is a valid ticket and what is not a valid ticket. And again, just to Councilmember Galambe's point, I had in the past told all of the constituents who called me, I told them to file the resolution, I'm sorry, file the ticket disputed. And once they get their hearing date, we would then, at this, at that point, we would, would, would go down with them. But only if they were driving within a reasonable limit, under thirty and under. If they were driving more than thirty miles an hour, I would tell them, pay the ticket. And if they're entitled to a refund, they'll get one. However, if they were driving thirty miles and under, either myself or my staff, one of my staff would go and accompany them at their hearing to ensure that tip would work out in their favor. But there, we've been receiving myriad calls as well, myriad complaints throughout this entire process. But again, too, we can't say that the process is broke without trying to fix it. I mean, let's try to get through the entire process. Let's see if the process has a chance of working. And then in the meantime, cars are slowing down. And then let's, does all be on the same page as far as moving forward, to ensure that we have the best system in place to get the outcomes that we all desire, which is to save lives, which is to punish the folks who are speeding in those areas where we have vulnerable populations and to ensure the safety of all residents and pedestrians in the city of Buffalo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, Councilmember Farrelletto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The few items that I'm specifically requesting for the committee meeting when we meet next week, I would like for data on any tickets that were issued outside of the time the cameras are allowed to be on. I have seen a ticket issued at seven-twenty-three in the morning when the camera is not supposed to be on until seven-thirty. To Commissioner Helfer's credit, I sent him an email with the person who received the ticket, and he, it was dismissed immediately without the person having to come in for a hearing. However, I would like the data on any ticket issued outside of the time that the cameras are supposed to be on. Also, data on if there were any tickets issued on dates that the cameras were not supposed to be on. Also, it is, it has been brought to my attention that in the legislation, that these notice of liabilities are supposed to contain the ID number of the camera which recorded the violation or a document locator number. I've received several emails where people show the ticket they received and they want to dispute it, and instead of having an ID number, it just says the word null, N-U-L-L. So I was also, would also like to know how many violations that went out, just state the word null instead of having a ID number for the camera. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Oh, Councilmember Wyatt, you are frozen on my screen.
Frozen? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I think I would have to be a cuckoo, like Councilmember Galambe's in that clock to try to support this. I mean, I support the amendment, I mean, the resolution, because it's just so many issues. I don't think we could sit here and list every single one. And so the betrayal of the trust of the people who already felt that this was a money grab, I, I don't know how we fix it. I do want to get the information, but at the end of the day, I just think that the public trust has been destroyed. It has just been obliterated. You know, people have complained to me over and over again, why do we have a camera on Bailey when the school is on Westminster? So guess what's been happening? When the school was opening, instead of people going up Bailey, they would drive up Westminster where the children are, where they get dropped off. So there's just issue after issue. A woman who paid her ticket, paid her ticket, gets two other tickets, and then gets a third ticket for the same ticket. I don't understand how we can still go forward with this, because it's so messed up all the way around. There's so many issues. But then for the vendor to send a letter that talks about the, the issue of the children, when that was the primary purpose of the Crown and Council supporting this, is because it was about the children. It was about the safety of the children. Never was it from the Crown and Council about a dollar. But now the focus has become about the money, about the process, about the number of tickets, about the, the beacons not being on. Because at first people were saying the beacon's not on, and I'm, I'm like, okay, maybe. But one of my colleagues, who saw it for himself, the beacon was not on, but people were getting tickets. How do the people trust this process, or how can we fix it and get, regain their trust? We can't. This system is so messed up, I don't know what to say. So I'm looking forward to the information to see what we have. I don't know if the vendor's input will help us whatsoever, because again, the people don't even trust what the vendor has to say. They tell us it's a snowstorm. They couldn't get things out. But again, this has been happening, and they know the law. They never sent a letter out saying, hey, we understand that people have gotten tickets because of the weather, whatever. They never said that. It's because of the public input that we got these changes. And so again, we had an opportunity on November seventeenth to try to write this thing, to put the beacons where people trusted the beacons would be. I have a beacon that's on, in the University District at St. Joe's. The beacon is front of Gloria Parks, and the camera is in front of Gloria Parks. How can people trust us? And so I'm looking forward to the information. This is really a mess. And I don't know if we can get the public trust to put it back in place, because it's been eroded. And I think it's in, in, irreparable, unreparable at this point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I can't see the, everybody, if you, if everybody can just hold on one second. All right. Anyone else to be heard on this? All right. Then the motion majority leader would be to adopt the results and send the remainder to committee.
Motion to adopt remainder to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number thirty-five, budget and personnel amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman? Councilmember Farrelletto? Councilmember Galambe? Councilmember Noakowski? Council President Pridgen? Councilmember Rivera? Councilmember Scanlon? Councilmember Wingo? Councilmember Wyatt? Item number thirty-six, Commissioner of Deeds.
Motion to adopt.
My Councilmember Wingo. Next item.
Believe that's it.
No. There's still more on the agenda. Might not have the latest. It's right up in the front. We've got seven and thirty-eight.
Item number thirty-eight, I guess.
Thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven, review and refund of invalid schedules. I can't see the whole item.
Yeah, the, our pictures, so the public doesn't realize, our pictures are in front of it. So review and refund of invalid school speed zone citations is the item. We understand. This is a late file, also written by myself and several colleagues. And this is to ask for a review and refund without the need of the citizen needing to request it for all invalid school board, schools, speed zone citations. What, what has occurred is there are many people out there who paid their tickets not knowing that it was not valid. So they did not utilize the appeal process, and some of them didn't. Because by the time they got the ticket, it was days before they would have been penalized. And some of them paid it, because as we have seen very publicly, that the phone number to call on the ticket just went blank. Or you left a message and the message was not returned. I personally agree with the sentiments of Councilmember Wyatt and several others that if this vendor, and I, I think Councilmember Wyatt was just shut it down now. I'm of the opinion, if this vendor cannot get it together and cannot get it together quickly, and these cameras are not adjusted, I am of the opinion that this council may have to take a stand and say, this has to go on pause. And I don't mean the school zones. I agree one hundred percent with school zones. Don't necessarily agree with the limit, but I agree with school zones. What I do not agree with is this, this vendor should not cut its teeth on Buffalo. Shouldn't be learning how to do this on Buffalo. And if it cannot get it together, I know I am prepared, as are several of my colleagues, to call a special meeting of this body and throw this vehicle into pause. Leaving the speed zones there, but not ticketing people until this gets together. Get, till this company gets itself together. So I'm asking, and we are asking in this resolution is that the administration review any issue, all issued citations, all of them. This is all computer-based. It is, it is not, I don't think it's rocket science to look and see which tickets were given before the cameras should have been on. Did those people pay it? And then right away refund their money. Personally, I think those who have those tickets don't know whether to appeal, they should just get a notification. They don't even have to appeal. Just if we were, this, this company, whatever happened, or whoever, I don't know where the blame lies. Hopefully, we'll find out next week in committee meeting. But at the end of the day, a person shouldn't have to contact us if they received a ticket that was wrong. If they received a ticket on the day when school was closed. If they received the ticket, and as Councilmember Farrelletto said, if the legislation says that it has to have a camera number, who, what, what person would know that? Nobody would. We should be refunding the money. And if this program is going to continue, this, this company and whoever else is responsible for rolling this out should be working day and night in order to fix this. But I, for one, stand ready if we have to, if this, if we continue. Now, this company has said that they, you know, they, that they're going to put a, a center here, basically, to send out the tickets and a call center here. The call center makes no difference where it's located if nobody's answering the phone. We, we call call centers a, and then to say that it's going to bring jobs to Buffalo. Is that your, is that your argument that it's going to bring jobs to Buffalo? But these jobs are being paid for, some of them on erroneous tickets. So you don't impress me when you say you're going to bring jobs to Buffalo and that you're going to put a call center. What's the difference if a person, and I welcome jobs to Buffalo, but that's not the point. What's the difference if a person is answering in Iowa and a person is answering in Buffalo if they're not answering at all? That, 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 it just makes no sense. So this, what this resolution calls for is that, that we refund the money. That the, everybody's ticket, every ticket that was issued is reviewed, and that those tickets where we have received revenue, we cannot take that revenue. My, my father taught me that if you go in a store and the people refund you or give you too much change, that's not a blessing. That's not you walking out saying, oh, look, I got a blessing. That's theft. You, you, somebody's going to get hurt by that. And so if we took too much change, we need to give it back. And that's what this resolution and what I'm asking for, to adopt, to adopt this and send the remainder to committee. Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all of your comments. You know, I, I do also believe that we ought to get some recommendations from Corporation Council regarding the, the exposure the city may experience, because we don't want to face a lawsuit either if we should go against the contractual obligations based on the contract with pausing a program that we had already put in place. But I am with you. But I am with you on, on the idea that we need to come up with a solution so that we are not, you know, so that these tickets are in fact valid. I just want to make sure that when the Corporation Council submits that opinion, that we, that legal opinion, that we do include any exposure that the city of Buffalo may have regarding, you know, the, the, the pausing of this program.
That's fair. I, I agree. Anyone else have, totally agree with that? Councilmember Rivera?
Mr. President, I agree. This program is a mess, the whole build-out the mess. I don't just want to blame the vendor, although the vendor is responsible for part of it, but the city is responsible for the, the actual beacons, installation of beacons, the putting up of signs, the adjudication. So they're not off the hook either. Those signs should have been moved or changed, those beacons should have been moved. If, yeah, this should have been done a long time ago. And it hasn't been done. As a result, people have gotten tickets where they shouldn't. And each valid ticket and invalid ticket should be voided. I agree with that. But we have to build it out the way the council had authorized it. We voted on this, and we voted that those signs be moved, and the beacons be put in certain locations, and they haven't been. And people have gotten tickets based on the locations of those beacons and signs when they should have, or people just weren't aware in certain instances that they were in the school zones because the beacons and the signs were not present where they should have been. So at that point, I agree with you, these tickets should be voided. And, and people shouldn't have to call in, they have that information. I agree with you, they should be made whole. But going forward into the future, when we approve something like this, and there's a build-out period, so we don't have this complete mess. I think we've learned from this one, that you have to have everything in place before we even begin to implement a program like this in the city of Buffalo, because this is embarrassing. And I don't want people to think that the council, because the council made every effort to make sure that people were properly noticed where the signs were, where the beacons were. And somebody dropped the ball on this, whether it's the vendors, whether it's our Public Works Department, the ball was dropped, and this is embarrassing, and as a result, people have gotten ticketed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Any other council member? All right. Then Majority Leader, can we adopt?
The remainder to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wingle. And I believe, is that the end of our agenda?
Item number thirty-eight, Commissioner of Deeds and Public Duties.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. Announcements?
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Regular committees, Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty, at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance, follow, following Civil Service, Tuesday, December fifteenth, at ten AM. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, December fifteenth, at one PM. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, December fifteenth, at two PM. Special Committees, Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, December fifteenth, at eleven AM.
Councilmembers, any announcements for your districts? Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to take this moment to wish any of our Jewish constituents or followers on our council pages a happy Hanukkah. We usually have a rabbi come in and give a prayer around this time of year. But with the COVID stuff and everything, it's just made everything a little bit more difficult than normal. But I will look, I will talk to the Reverend and see if we can get somebody in, maybe in January or February, to offer the prayer for us. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah as we lead into the holiday season. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else, council members?
Thank you, Council President. This Friday is our annual Shop South Buffalo event. Typically, it is a kind of a shopping blitz that takes place on the second Friday night of December to support our small business. However, this year's obviously a little different. We've cut back a little bit, I mean, we had it before and after gathering, kind of a celebration of small business and everyone coming together in the community. But obviously, we can't do that this year, so we've extended the hours, hours. It's an all-day event. Small businesses in the community have once again stepped up and offered deals for people for their Christmas shopping, and I really urge everyone who's capable to get out there and support these small businesses during the day on Friday. They've been absolutely devastated this year due to the pandemic. And they are always there for us in our communities when they, when they need. We need sponsorships for sports teams and other organizations. They always seem to be there for us, so it's really important that we come out and support them this year in particular.
Right. And also, there is a mobile food pantry on December sixteenth, ten to twelve, at the True Buffalo Church's drive-through, just pull up. At, you come through the parking lot or to five ninety-four Winslow to our charities building, receive an emergency food box filled with nutritious items. Drive up, pick up, strongly encouraged, but you can also walk up if you are not driving to pick up that. Also, want to encourage people to shop locally and to make sure, and I know that my colleague, many of my colleagues who are on right now have really been pushing this in the media, in districts all over. So please, what is so important is those, those small businesses that we may lose. This is the, the season in which they make the majority of their profit. And so it is so important, even local restaurants, local, whatever's open, whatever's legally open, that you would go and you would patronize our small businesses. Anything else? If not, Majority Leader?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by President Pro Tim Scanlon. We are adjourned.